Good afternoon. Welcome to the District of Squamish Committee of the Hall Meeting for November 13th, 2018. I'm Squamish, which I hope means welcome to the territorial territory of the Squamish Nation. For those at home, I am Doug Race, one of the councillors, and I am the acting mayor this month, standing in place for Mayor Elliott, who is out of the country at the moment, and will be chairing this meeting. So we have an agenda for adoption. It's a mover for the agenda, approved by councillor Stoner, signed by councillor French. One in favour, opposed, motion carries unanimously. And one item of business, affordable housing programme update. Mr Buckston.
Thank you, acting mayor and councillor, Gary Buckston, general manager here at the district. Since then, I've been shepherding the affordable housing role for the last couple of years. Wanted to sort of give council an update on progress to date. It's certainly our objective to get people into affordable housing as fast as possible in as large a numbers as possible. That's what we strive for, and to get this function built. Having said that, when I was putting this together, I sort of realised that this was a little egocentric in terms of the history, goes back as far as I do, these four years. I'm certainly standing on the shoulders of others that came before me. This didn't start with me. Hopefully, it won't end with me either. The other is that we're not the only player in the community here. There are a number of partners that we're actively working with, whether it's the Helping Hand Society, they have a project that's broken ground just recently, that is sort of in the transitional shelter part of the spectrum. Cedar Sky Community Services offers a wide range of various affordable housing. The Seniors Home Society, they have a project that's likely going to break ground in the coming months. And then the House and Women's Society Centre, they have some housing in the region. So we're collaborating with those groups in addition to Vancouver Coastal Health and the other group that is the Cedar Sky Division of Family Practice, healthcare practitioners with an interest in housing issues. So that's under the umbrella of the Squamish Integrated Housing Solutions Group. So we're not working alone on this, and we're working very closely with our partners in the community. But in terms of the history, I mean quickly, council is very aware of that this issue's come upon us quite rapidly. Sales prices in the last five years have increased very rapidly and very quickly. I say, when I moved here in 2014, 2015, there was an issue emerging, and that issue, I would say now has solidly emerged and is of a very pressing nature. Sales price numbers, in terms of the Integrated Housing Solutions Group produce this, it's simply a reflection of where incomes land and where rents, the bars at the bottom are, where incomes land and the lines across the top are where rent rates. You can see the two basically don't touch each other, or the bachelor level for healthcare and social services. Average incomes are not meeting rents in the district. If you look at core needs and where some of the lower incomes are, you can see that none of them come even close to the lowest rental levels that we have in the community. So for those that are of increasing need, there are some very serious gaps between both numerically and income-wise and rent-wise for the core needs group in the community. Vacancy rate will not be news to anyone. This is from CMHC's website. You can see since 2015, the vacancy rate has hovered at or around zero. Point three is essentially zero. It's as close as you can get. It's effectively zero. So again, even if you can afford it, finding it may be tricky. Just in terms of, I say, more recent history, documents and programmes that have preceded me, the Affordable Housing Framework, started in 2013, the Housing Task Force that council and mayor commissioned in 2016, made its recommendations late 2016. Following that immediately, we got into contracted services provision with Macola Development Services, who has been our consultant since that time. So we've been using contracted services to help move this programme along. Macola's produced a number of reports since that time, a background of reports, background report and gap analysis, so that reviewed previous housing reports, key gaps, and cursory housing needs assessment, and suggestions on how to fund the housing function. I'd say the Need and Demand Report was essentially a sort of a desktop evaluation of numerical needs for affordable housing, again, back in 2017. At the same time as we're working on that, we were looking at two potential sites for an affordable rental housing project. We started with two. One is in Valley Cliff along Little Swamis Creek, Guilford Drive. We did some very cursory riparian area assessments and realised that that was going to be not impossible but tricky, and time was not on our side, so tricky didn't help. So it's not that that site is undevelopable, it's just going to be more difficult to manage the environmental and the flood hazard issues. We focused our efforts since then on the Buckley Avenue site, on the right-hand side of the screen there, which is where the skate ball is and the youth centre. It's essentially treed in large part now. There are riparian areas, again, that we need to deal with, but we have an understanding of where those are at. So we pursued that one since 2017, and we did make a grant application on that. We were successful, but at the same time, we were working on, Macola was working with us on policy work, so a policy and operational options analysis. So that was a high-level review, an overview of current policy and local resources, and an overview of housing operational models from various other communities across Western Canada. Its full recommendations were clear policies and guidelines, looking at finding more sites, creating funding goals, and creating a long-term vision. The Buckley Avenue site, I say, we did make the grant application in late 2017 to CMHC. At that point, we were dealing with 80 units, 72 apartment units, eight townhouse units, modest market and entry level. It certainly wasn't, there were some comments at the time, is that we could have gone further on the affordability level, but at the time, the rents were slightly below market, around 10%, and the project needed no operational funding. It essentially, we thought, could pay for itself. We made that under the Community Partnership Initiative, the CPI programme, BC Housing was running at the time. It's always been our intent that we don't operate internally, that it's operated by a partner who has some experience in the affordable housing area, rather than trying to run it as staff. As noted, we were successful in getting two grants, one from BC Housing at $145,000 and another one from CMHC for $50,000. So we eventually ended up with $195,000 to help us move that project along. What we did find when that BC Housing funding came along is it came in the form that was a little bit of a surprise to us in the form of a promissory note. That potentially creates some sort of financial liability for the district because it's folded into a future project mortgage. $145,000 was something that we could handle relatively easily. The newer project has construction financing in the $20 million, gross in the $20 million range. That's going to be far more complex and a far greater liability to deal with because we need to borrow for any period in excess of five years. So we can only do that by obtaining public approval or consent. And that may impact our ability to borrow for all the other projects that we have in our capital programming companies. At that point in time, we came to realise that the partnering agreement was far more time-sensitive, and that that partner who can assume a mortgage, it was critical that we get them on board as soon as possible. So flipping back to policy work, again, we're trying to run policy and project at the same time. Macola in 20, earlier this year, produced a final report. Its recommendations were a comprehensive affordable housing policy, which is a compilation or a coordination of all of our policies that help to facilitate development by others, principally in the zoning bylaw, the CAC policy, and various other policies and bylaws that we have. And then a perpetually affordable housing policy or bylaw, it's likely going to be a policy. And that's intended to outline how units that we develop or acquire through CACs are tenanted, operated and managed, at what income levels, who's eligible. So all of those issues will be dealt with in that policy. Final recommendation of the final report from Macola was that we form the Ace Squamish Housing Organisation. At that point in time, we were a little, as staff, we were a little uncomfortable that we were ready to make that jump, so we asked Macola to go back and do another review, a deeper review on the options available with respect to an organisation, and how we can roll that housing function out administratively. And now we're back to Buckley Avenue again, in terms of project management. No sooner than we actually got the grant funds through the CPI programme and were ready to go on that, we were advised that BC Housing had a new fund, a community housing fund. So we were advised, just as we were sort of starting to sort of think we would just go back under the previous programme, we essentially had to reapply again under this new programme, which we have done. We did that in September, and we're awaiting an announcement on that. We use the funds to reduce risk in the project and advance our understanding of the project quite substantially. It's changed, again, quite substantially. We now have one apartment building with 76 apartments, but it's reaching far deeper into the affordability spectrum, forgetting the ratios here.
30%?
30% below market.
30% meaning?
Yes.
What's the, what is the ratio?
Of the rent below, yeah. A certain number of the units in that 76 have to be below market, which is principally where we were before. It's probably 10, 15% below market. The rent geared to income goes deeper into the subsidy spectrum and makes it even more affordable, and then the deep subsidies is really just what it says. It's getting to be very affordable. It's going, the cost is, the project's going to be around $20 million in capital construction costs, and requires, best estimates right now, a $690,000 annual operating subsidy because the rent revenue that we're deriving from the building is far less than we were before, but we're getting far more affordable rents than we were previously. In terms of the, what we have done is we've certainly reduced risk with the project. We've clarified a lot of uncertainties related to the project. We've got more architectural detail. Geotechnically, we know what the site holds for us. We've got a far better handling, handle on the riparian areas. We know the value of the site. We've done flood hazard assessment. Civil engineering and traffic assessments have been done, at least on a basic level. So we've got a new, a full new cost refinement and evaluation, both capital and operating. So the latest work is we're waiting on the BC Housing decision on the Buckley project. We have issued a request for expression of interest for an operating partner. We've done that to try and expedite the process once we have notification from BC Housing, that we won't be dealing with an unknown number of potential partners, that we will be dealing with perhaps up to three. That RFEOI closes next Friday, so by then we should have a handle on who's interested in perhaps being a partner with us in our housing programme. So we're continuing to work on policy. You'll see next week, Macola's final report on the housing organisation and the direction we should take on what sort of entity we should create to administer the housing function. That's going to be with council next week. And then as staff, we've been working on a draft, draft strategy to sort of provide a bit of an overview and some coordination for all of the activities that we've got ongoing under the housing function. The vision and objectives are there for you. So this is very much a thought piece, it's very much internal. We haven't discussed this with any of our partners, we need to work on this internally. But we're, some of the strategic directions that we're looking at is designing, resourcing the function. I say, some of that's up with council next week. Maintaining the existing stock that we've got, increasing supply of affordable housing units. And coordinating and enhancing all municipal affordable housing policy and regulations. We have a lot in various areas, from developed cost charges to the expedited application policy that you saw this morning. Make sure that we're coordinating all of those under an umbrella policy, and then collaborating with our affordable housing agencies, our partners in the community that are already doing this in large part. Monitoring and measuring, what we have found is we're data poor in the community. There isn't a lot of really good data on rents. It tends to be done very periodically. It's not easy to get good information. And then we're also considering some directions around workforce housing, which is, agreed is just simply a subset of affordable housing. Now, I don't know if you wanted to, Natasha, you wanted to?
Yeah, maybe just a little bit. The buckets of work that we're focusing on really is around the middle. The key area of focus for us is on the spectrum of subsidised to market rental, and mostly in that kind of low end of market, kind of middle, the missing middle space. The areas of focus, it's really in two categories. There's policy levers, and then there's sort of leveraging land and capital opportunities, including CAC contributions. And that sort of land unit supply category is more in the low end of market area, and then the market rental side is more where our policy levers about maintaining that rental equilibrium, more sort of on that end of the spectrum of our focus. And then on either eye, either end of the spectrum, more in the, that should say, affordable ownership and the shelter side, that's more where we leverage our partnerships and sort of more of an advocacy and opportunity development lens on either side, less of our direct sphere of influence in those areas.
So just in terms of where we're heading from here, is, I say, next week is a decision on moving forward on the organisation and the way that we sort of put together the role. So we're waiting on BC Housing funding announcements on Buckley, assuming that we get a positive decision. We've then got a lot of hard work around construction and managing that project. But I say, we have sourced, we do have another partner, Proficio Project Management, who is going to help us through that process and get it to break ground, and then they'll carry the project through to completion. Policy work on the comprehensive policy and the perpetual policy, and then stakeholder engagement that we'll do with the partners, initially with our partners in the community on that strategy, once we've sort of got that a little bit more polished. So that's sort of a very short history of the last two, three years of what we've been up to on the housing function.
Thank you. Before I go to council, just a couple of points for clarification. The $690,000 operating deficit, to be clear, I believe it was to be coming from BC Housing, not from municipal taxpayer. Am I correct in that?
That's correct, yeah.
And the other part is the move to get a partner on board. The end goal in that is to have the $20 million, give or take, mortgage debt in their name and not the district's name, so it doesn't affect our borrowing capacity. Am I correct in stating that?
That's correct. The partnering agreement and/or lease, probably both, would establish a long-term interest for that entity into the, into the site. They can then hold the mortgage, and we don't have to. It's the same model that we've used for the under-one roof project. We have a lease and a partnering agreement with Squamish Helping Hands Society, they hold the mortgage, so we don't have to try and juggle how to borrow those funds or get public approval to borrow, which may be tricky, and we really don't want a $20 million or what, $20 million the construction cost, the mortgage would be less, but we don't need to have that mortgage limiting what we may want to borrow for Fivehalls or Parks or Brennan Park or any of the other things that we have on our to-do list.
So the council, this is the question portion of the discussion, so for questions. Councillor Anderson.
Late 2015, Gary, you gave a presentation on a review of potential sites, two of which you've highlighted here, but there was a third one, and I wonder if I could have an update on that one or what was the outcome? And also, where does the real estate strategy, how does the real estate strategy, in brief, address looking for sites for affordable housing? The exciting question that I'm wondering about is between the two bridges over the Mapford River, on the south side of the river, and I'm not sure of the reasons why it was discounted for further consideration.
I can...
So between the, on the other side of the government road from the Elements?
I'm trying. Just one button.
Oh. I'm just trying to pull up the map so that our councillors can... Ah, anyone know where we are? I never look at this.
I want to.
I always go to the back button. No, it's not that one.
How about I want to?
I don't want to.
You.
Oh, oop, sorry.
Actually, there was an email that the GIS system's down.
No. We always access it through the internet site, so we never... I guess it doesn't run too.
I think we can picture it though, because it's further's a pile of gravel right now and it's opposite the old highway side.
Yeah.
Just to the north of the old highway.
Is it primarily tree and dikes?
It's still a dike.
That's right. So between the dike and the road, Centennial, whatever.
That's correct. Yes, between the dike and Centennial Road.
If you go back to your Google, in fact, you've got a subset of it, maps and data.
Google Maps, that'd be enough for us.
Yeah, there we go. So it's actually this site?
Yes.
Yep. Long way of getting around. We don't actually own the site.
Right. It's Crown.
Correct. So I believe at that point, we thought we had more interest in it than we actually do, but it's not ours to...
I think initially we focused on the sites that we had more control over. Yeah, given the time constraints.
But in terms of the second question, the long-term real estate facility strategy is essentially the housing, the affordable housing function is sort of dealt with in two ways, one of which is to source Crown land through sponsored Crown grounds. There isn't a lot of that land available left in the community too, and Mr Plum is well aware of where that land is, as are we all. There isn't a lot. There's no focus on using municipal lands because we don't, we don't have any. It would have to come from other uses. The other option is to co-locate affordable housing with new facility development, so it could go on top of a new building in Munich Hall and Farnhall and Brennan Park, any of those, if, if we can make that pencil out. That simply becomes an economic equation, can you, does the cost of the building, can you make that work with the rents that you're able to charge at an affordable level? Otherwise, we'd become residential landlords for just normal, regular housing. So those two options are the real estate strategy's response to the affordable housing verse.
And we'll speak more of that when we come in with the master plan, probably sometime in early in the new year, with the draft of that, you'll see a little more about how that may all factor into things. We're exploring that as we speak right now.
Councillor.
I've got a question along the lines of the deficit, the $690,000. And the funding for that would just be, it's standard practice from BC Housing to provide budget for that, and is it included, like, comes out later in the next, the life of the building?
So BC Housing has operating agreements that are usually tied to the length of the mortgage. And it's, this is very standard practice for affordable housing that fails, they will provide the operating subsidy because the expectation is that the cost of the building is less than what you're paying for. So this is, their portfolio of programs, almost all could be an operating subsidy.
There is another option, that they can provide more capital funding to create a smaller mortgage, thereby we need less revenue to cover the mortgage, so the building can pencil out that, or you don't know which way BC Housing will choose to go on that. But we've been clear is that this isn't a $690,000 annual municipal contribution.
Yes. It got back with us at some, we're going to need...
Councillor Stone.
I'm curious, what's the BC Housing grant of $100,000 that we've already received that came in the form of a grant, you know? What has happened to that? Because you did mention that it would get rolled into a future mortgage.
Yes, we've, that went into putting a new application in in September, but it was essentially, we took the previous idea and took it to the next stage. So we redid the architecture, and all of that work that I, that was in the... So all of these activities, the further architectural detail, additional costing, and then the traffic assessment, so we know what needs to be done to get traffic in and out, we know the water sewer and storm constraints, we know that we can build on site through geotechnical work, they've done work there. So all of, we've substantially reduced the risk. Essentially, that went back to put another application into the Community Housing Fund project.
Councillor Bill.
So looking through the reports, it wasn't clear to me if the, and I use the term loosely, but the approved development in the pipeline, how much that's considered in the future housing demand projections? And is that something they consider, or have we wrapped our heads around how all of that development might impact housing affordability?
Well, most of it, I mean, very little of it will be affordable, other than what we obtain through community amenity contributions. So it's, I guess I'm maybe missing the question.
Well, I guess some people might argue it increases supply and brings down demand, brings down prices, maybe, I don't know.
No one's yet seen that, that solution work out. Supply, I mean, supply in the lower mainland, from what I've read, has been at or where it needs to be, and prices have still continued to rise. So I think if you can maintain market supply, you'll lessen how bad that trend can get. It's likely to decrease or lower the rate of increase. Less, lessen the negative impact of appreciation, but we are not going to build our way out of this, unless there's a significant shock in the market and prices decrease and the new units come on the market at an affordable level. Builders typically don't do that. They'll price to market. They'll price to market. And if prices decrease to the point that they're affordable, we'll have a different set of problems with all the people that are currently in houses now probably have mortgages that are underwater. So I don't think we're going to see supply solve the problem. Can it help? Yes, it will help. But I don't think we can build our way to affordability.
Councillor Anderson?
Gary, I wonder if you may be able to return to the draft strategy slide?
Sure.
I'd like to address a potential item for consideration in the list at bottom of the slide there.
You'll come back.
Okay. And that is pilot projects and innovation. That is addressing design and technology, potential for improvements to improve affordability. And this came out of the process of creating the framework, Affordable Housing Framework Report of 2013, was a conference in 2012, which included a number of people from the construction industry and local developers. And this item got discussed quite a bit, and it was suggested with support from O C P policies at that time, that were supportive of encouraging innovation. And that this can be lost sight of, because often when we talk about housing policy, there's a bunch of policy walks in the room, but not construction people. But anybody in the house, in the construction or building materials industry could point out that off-site, off-site construction and prefab technologies can reduce costs substantially. And that we have a long way to go relative to other jurisdictions in pursuing that. So this is just a suggestion that innovation and pursuing innovation and pilot project encouraging them might be an element to add to that.
Okay, we've spoken to two modular builders with respect to Buckley, so that is on our radar.
Very good.
Whether or not any of them want to get involved is, I don't know, but we've spoken to two.
Any questions? Councillor Erving?
On that site, we've been, we've been using the skate park to reference where it is, but there's, hasn't been any mention to the fact of the skate park and the youth centers that are located there as well. Can you speak to the, to those?
The, I should have, but the, the skate park, that's this, and of course, my curse isn't chillin'.
The 3864.
Yeah, that, that's the skate park. That's staying. That's not going anywhere. So the building is sort of to the north and west and across the, literally sort of across the middle of the site. The youth center is at or beyond life cycle. It needs to be, it needs to be replaced. Part of the Buckley project considers it what we call a youth hub. That may have recreational programs to replace what's at the youth center. It may have more of a clinical bent to it. We, again, that's something we're working on with Sea of Sky Community Services and Vancouver Coastal Health right now. And the school division as well.
And sorry, on this map here with that copy, like, coming through, just catching the youth center, is that fairly accurate as to the layout of the...
Yes, it's not on our land, yeah.
That's a long story.
My understanding is...
We're aware of it.
Yeah, it's on Crown land.
Okay.
That's the old youth center.
Yeah.
One of the...
It's really old. But it's close, it's close to the property line.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Under organizational impact in the report here, to quote, "The affordable housing function continues to have a significant impact on resources at the core leadership level." Does this mean that one of the key benefits of setting up a Squamish housing organization or Squamish housing authority will be to alleviate that, that burden?
Yes.
So through our C A C policy, I think there's been a move to include affordable housing in, in amongst non-affordable housing or market housing, I guess. And here, we're talking more about a concentration of affordable housing. And I'm not clear where the research is on if one's better, one's worse, where the thinking is on that. And if there's, are we doing this because economically it's the only thing that's practical or is that sort of best practice these days or...
I mean, ideally, it would be to have mixed income buildings. We don't have that luxury. This is the one site under the one program that we're able to, able to access. And the income levels on this are dictated by B C Housing. So that modest market, I'd say the free, oh, there it is. The below market rent geared to income and deep subsidy are dictated through the community housing fund. If you want to apply to the program, you need to meet those. I mean, it, one of the other ways that B C Housing could address the operating subsidy issue is to allow some units closer to market. That's, that may be an option that they want to discuss to reduce that, that subsidy amount. But at present, they've pretty much said, this is, this is the program, make your application call in it. So we did.
Can I ask that, Gary, the, two questions about the evidence. The evidence is definitely split on what best practice is, and it really depends on the needs of the particular population and the degree to which they're able to integrate into communities. This is not a program that we're anticipating is going to be a, you know, really high need for out of population. That's just not, that's not what our need base is. This is not a downtown site. So we have, I, I think we need to look at this building in terms of our needs as a community and also what other, what B C Housing is doing in other jurisdictions. And it does tend to be this sort of three-tier within one building approach. That seems to be a, a model that integrates long-term existing communities of this nature. Does that help? Answer that question.
And I have a question about the other site, the Alitlos site. What is involved in getting that to be a workable site? Is there one or two sentence answer to that?
A detailed, detailed riparian assessment.
Sorry, go ahead.
The, the issue was that isn't a lot of units you can get out of that. That site, it's fairly constrained, so there were probably better options for us to have a crack at before that one because of the riparian and, and the flood hazard. And it's, it's literally right on the banks of Little Stowance Creek, so...
I think there's also some servicing upgrades that would provide it.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, there are some sponsored Crown grants that we would like to pursue.
Do you want to explain your sponsored Crown?
Free land from the province.
If you go back, yeah. If you're short. Yeah, if you go to the map.
The strings attached.
Yeah. That makes for a great one.
And that, also, that would explain why that Buckley site was chosen first as well. That's land that we own, the district owns it, but it was provided to us by the Crown for free at an earlier time, with the provision that we can't sell it, we can't make money off it and monetize it. So we have certain assets around the community that we've acquired on that basis, so those are the sites we've been looking at first, because they're not sites that have a market value attached to them. So the Buckley one was the one that had fit that category and had sort of the lease constraints and was the site that we can move on quickly. But we have other sites that will be, you know, you'll be getting informed on and updated on as time goes on, and other sites we have in our portfolio that meet those criteria as well.
Any other questions from council?
I think one.
Go ahead.
Can you bring back up the slide with the vacancy rates? Might be a silly clarifying question. I'm curious what the difference between vacancy rate is and availability rate?
I will find out.
Just on that point, what's the difference between A and C?
Yeah.
In the first column, vacancy rate column, zeros...
I think it's capacity, zero capacity.
0.3 or a little?
A little.
Again, I will find out what those, I just, I cut and pasted this off of a C M H C website last Thursday, so I can certainly figure out what availability means and what the As and Cs mean.
Does it have any questions?
Guilford site, does that include that fenced area that one time was a recycle depot?
Yes.
More questions? Any comments from council? Is there a resolution sought?
No, this was purely, purely nothing, you know, just to sort of get you, really for the decision next week where that sits in all the work we've been doing today, so...
Does council have any comments as opposed to questions?
One thing that jumped out at me, the percentage of commuters that was mentioned a few times in the report, you know, we have more commuters than Whistler, but compared to some of the other communities in the report, we seem to be in line. Do we have any sense of what our proportion of commuters are? And, because you hear some people say, oh, Squamish is a bedroom community, but actually looking at some of the numbers in the report, I started to wonder, oh, maybe, maybe we're not actually. Do you have any sense of that?
No, I don't. I've never looked at our ratio of commuters to, are you talking about other communities in the lower mainland?
Yeah, I think they had a number of, like Vancouver and a couple other places, and us around 70, 70% working in town, 30% commuting, as I recall.
After Mary Ray's, like, we can bring that forward. Economic Development is going to be providing some updates and orientation for council as well. This is where it comes into economic development in terms of the statistics and what that means for it.
I made the commuter connection because it seems, perhaps the hypothesis anyways, once folks figured out you could commute from here to work in the lower mainland is that real estate prices then became connected, whereas that previously they were a little disconnected. Now we're definitely connected into lower man's real estate trends. And I don't think that's going to change any time.
Any other comments?
I'll just make a comment. I thank you for this, and I think I was asking questions about the Guilford site, because I think going forward, notwithstanding that we haven't really finalized the Buckley Avenue site, going forward, we're going to have to start pretty quickly looking at the next site and what that might be and whether it's that site or other Crown Grant sites. And the other thing we broached with, with the minister when we met her at E B C M was the thought of some of the B C rail lands and somehow getting them off the free market into sort of something with more of a social purpose. I have to admit, she didn't exactly leap at that with fleas, but I still think that might be an avenue to consider with the government. And there'll be a number of things. This is, this is something that members of council, our council has been quite involved in over the past term pretty well. And it is one, one piece of the solution to this. There's the under one roof, there's Center Point, there's other, there are different levels of housing requirements, and this is one of the pieces. The point of ghettoization, which I think is what Councillor Pettinbill was going, is something we've always tried to keep front of mind, that we wanted to avoid that. And so the mixed number of uses in this, speaking for myself, the mixed income levels in this hopefully gets away from that as well as putting this in a, basically a single family and multifamily neighborhood. So by scattering these things around and possibly picking up pieces from development, hopefully we'll be trying to solve this problem. But I don't think this is something we're just going to see the end of the problem out of this at least. It's going to be ongoing. I think we're almost indefinitely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There being no other business to come before this meeting, I'll vote for a motion determining. Councillor French, councillor Anderson second, in favor, opposed, Kerry Jean Annes. Thank you.